Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular scheduled Beaver Creek City Council meeting. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Curran?
Here.
Councilmember Littrell?
Here.
Councilmember Rushing?
Here.
Councilmember Upton?
Here.
Councilmember Van?
Vice Mayor Garcia?
Here.
Mayor Stone?
Here.
Motion to excuse Councilmember Van.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Van. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. If you'd all join me and with the pledge in a short moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we just take a moment, please, and keep in your minds the people affected by the tornado, as well as all those volunteers throughout our community that helped everybody that needed We have an agenda before us, are there any changes?
Mr. Mayor, I would like... Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make one change. I'd actually like to remove items D and E from number five.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to amend the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve an... amended?
Agenda.
I couldn't get the word out. Amended agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the amended agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. This is ordinance 19-15.
This is the second reading of an ordinance amending the zoning map by rezoning approximately 1.203 acres of land from R.P.D. residential planned unit development to R-1A, one-family residential district, further described as book six, page six, parcel 226 on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. This is the second reading of this ordinance, and so it is a public hearing. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to address council on this application? Anyone? In that case, we will close the public hearing. Are there any comments from council? Seeing none, this ordinance will naturally move to the third and final reading. Thank you. Next item is resolution 19-41.
This is a resolution to adopt a Parks, Recreation and Culture Master Plan for the city of Beaver Creek.
All right. Ms. Farrell?
Good evening. Mr. Brans... No, that's not Bransetter. Pat Hoagland is here, he's going to do the presentation. Bransetter Carroll is the one that did our master plan that we're just finishing. He also did the one in 2010, so we're really excited to have the same company onboard to do 2010 and then this next one. So he's going to kind of give you an overview of the process, what took place, and then also, over the past five years, what we've accomplished from the first one. So after that, I'm sure he'd be happy to answer any questions, and then we'll be looking for an adoption of that final plan.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's a pleasure to be back here again. We're going to talk for a few minutes about the most positive service you provide for your residents and how you can road map to improve that over the next 10 years. One of the last chapters we wrote, and it should have been one of the first ones, was looking at all the things that you did in the last... that were in the last master plan that you've accomplished. And it's an impressive list. So that master plan really helped guide you through the first levy, and then the replacement levy, and the development of the expansion of the senior center, and Lefino Plaza, some indoor programming space which people wanted in the plan, and a lot of playground and park improvements, and more trails. So a lot of things have happened as a result of that plan. So that's, you know, why we want to continue to do another plan to guide you through the next 10 years. There's still some things that haven't been accomplished. You see up on the screen, it's a four-phased approach to our plan. There was an evaluate phase where we got our arms around the whole parks and recreation system, the programs, the attendance at your events and programs, your facilities, and budget, and all those kind of things. And then we also had a big engagement phase, which we'll talk about, which led to the development of a new vision for the future, and then the plan itself. This is a map showing... it's a composite service area. There was a whole series of maps showing the walk and drive times to all the parks. And this is a composite of those. And basically, the areas in red... whoops, not quite there yet.
Automatically did it?
Yeah, it did it. Oh, sorry about that. The areas in red are the least well-served, and the areas in darker blue are the best served. So it showed some gaps in that area. Good. So in the public engagement, we had a statistically valid survey of 464 people. We wanted at least 400, so we felt good about that. We had a web and handout survey that anybody could fill out that over 1,100 people completed. We had an open house, also a movie-in-the-park event that we went to, at 24 different stakeholder groups, and then we had an online engagement forum through MindMixer. This is just one of the charts that shows the results of the mail survey, the web survey, and the 2008 survey to see how it changed, but when we asked people whether they'd like to see improved at their parks, restrooms is at the top of the list, and it typically is. And trails, shade, drinking fountains, natural areas, trees, picnic shelters and picnic tables and benches, those are the top elements that they identified. Go to the next one. And then in the mail survey, we combined a few questions to come up with a priority for investment in the top things in terms of facilities from what the people told us in the surveys. You can see in the blue at the top of the list, the walking and hiking trails, indoor swimming pool and water parks, outdoor swimming pool, neighborhood parks, recreation community center, and the natural areas and nature parks. Those are the top high-priority elements. Now, you might not necessarily do some of those, but those are the things that people said they'd had a demand for. And then we asked the same thing for programs. Adult fitness and wellness are at the top, by far, of what people wanted to see. More summer concerts, and we see that trend all over the country where those activities that bring the community together are what people really want to see. More nature programs, programs for people age 55-plus, because that's a growing segment of the population, and then a lot of the other medium priorities there. And then we asked people, what are the reasons for not using your parks and programs more often? And do not know what is offered was the top one, and that oftentimes is. And that's, you know, just shows the need for more marketing. It's something you can do about. You know, don't have time, we can't probably help that. But don't know the location of the facility, so that's another thing that can be improved through marketing and promotion. They use facilities in other communities, and I guess this whole region is blessed with a lot of different parks and recreation facilities and county park systems. And in some cases, a facility or program's not offered, or the times aren't convenient, but those are smaller compared to the others that we can improve on. This map just shows that the yellow dots on there, or orange dots, show the locations of where the people were that filled out the mail survey. So it's a really good distribution of those survey results, just to sort of verify the demographics of that. So I'll talk a little bit about the open house that we had. We had a dollar voting. We gave everybody $1,000 in play money. I think several of you did that. So some of the top of the list was a new spray ground or splash pad, upgrade your existing parks, indoor game courts and gyms, acquiring open space, walking trails, athletic fields, expand your programs. And there was a category for other, and in the other, the top things were some fast pitch softball fields, a recreation center, a water park, and artificial turf athletic fields are some of the top things people wrote in. Okay. And the stakeholders, there's the 24 different groups we met with. I'm not going to, you know, read through all of them, but we pretty much talked about everybody that wanted to talk to us to get their perspective, and you get a lot more information from these groups than you can from a survey. You can get into more detail to find out those things. But some of the top things that they told us... whoops, going too fast. Is it doing that automatically? No, okay. So these aren't in a specific order, but partnerships with, you know, Parks, Recreation, Culture and other organizations, more volunteers are needed, a central calendar for not just your activities, but other organizations' activities as well, some more teen programs and activities, some water access and irrigation on some of the fields, other field improvements, the need for some indoor facilities. It's great that you have the Lefino Plaza to do some indoor program, but there's still a need for some larger indoor spaces for some game courts. Better communication and marketing, improving and adding restrooms, and then trails connecting the parks are some of the top things that those groups told us. With this, we met with our steering committee, and several of them are here tonight, and appreciate them coming out, and they were great to work with. Again, they had a great one last time, and this time was great, too. But we developed a vision for the future, and I'll read these, "Building a happy and healthy community by connecting people to quality parks, engaging programs, and unique events." And then also a new mission statement to deliver recreational experiences that enhance quality of life. Try to keep those relatively simple and broad. And then from that, there's a series of core values. Connectivity is one. Go ahead, just put them all up there. Health and wellness is another area of a core value. Safety, inclusion, collaboration with other organizations, and leadership, and that's your administration. And then that led to the development of a series of goals and objectives. So the first goal is quality parks and facilities, and then with objectives that deal with inclusion, sports support, and land management. Go on to the next one. Goal two, enhance connectivity, and that's not just the trails, that's what people will think about, but connections to nature, and connection to your neighbors and to the community in these gathering spaces. And then goal three, attractive programs and quality experiences, so programs that have a community impact, more accessibility to your facilities, and innovation, being on the leading edge of the facilities and programs that you offer. And then the final goal is effective management and efficient operations, because you can't develop all those things and operate them effectively without a good workforce in place that's well-trained. Finances, that's, as you all well know, that are in place. Engagement of the community throughout the process, collaboration with other organizations, because you can't do it all yourself. And then quality maintenance and keeping up, and you do. Your department does a great job of maintaining the parks. Okay. So a few sites we did concept plans for, and this is Lefino Park. I don't have a pointer here, but right behind the existing restroom building, there's a spray ground. We show another basket... yeah, right there. There you go, thank you. And then where the stage is, a roof over that with some additional support so you can have more of your concerts and events there. And then I believe there's some fitness stations and a basketball court that have been added to that site. Go to the next one. This is Bullskin Run Park. That's really an untapped resource out there, so most of the park is just going to be nature trails. But there is a need in that part of the city, there's a gap in terms of parks. So there are some neighborhood and community park-type activities. It includes a small parking lot, a nature-themed playground, picnic shelter, restrooms, pump track, basketball court, and a spray ground in that area. Go to the next one. Virgilio Park, that's area of the ball fields not being used, so we thought that'd be a great place to develop a dog park, something that people talked about quite a bit, and also some, you know, half-basketball court, upgrading the shelter and long-term replacement of the playground, and putting some more trails in there. And then Cinnamon Ridge Park, again, another one of those untapped resources. There's not a whole lot of development here, but just upgrading those trails, making them clear, putting some more signage there so people can find them better. So there's two slides that talk about some of the major recommendations, because this is a pretty thick book, as you can see. So improving your maintenance on all the parks as one, adding support features throughout the park system, like drinking fountains and shelters and more shade, those kind of things. Replacing your outdated and deteriorated playgrounds, you've done a great job of that, but there's still a few out there that need to be replaced. Several were replaced while we were working on the plan, actually. Add picnic shelters to some of your parks. Performing an ADA accessibility assessment, something that should have been done prior to 2012, and a lot of communities are behind on that. Some master plans for individual parks where you'd work with the neighborhoods in those areas to identify the needs, but specifically, you know, building on the ones that we showed here, but also Bullskin Run, Cinnamon Ridge, E.J. Nutter, Fox Run, Stafford, Summerfield, Virgilio, and the Ankeny Soccer Complex. In discussing the Ankeny Soccer Complex, we talked about rearranging all that to provide more facilities for the community, like a walking trail around the perimeter and an artificial turf field, and that's one area out there. Continue to implement the 2019 thoroughfare plan with additional trails and connectivity. Paved loop trails in some of your parks. As we talked about the site plan, Bullskin Run is a passive park for the community. Some more outdoor fitness equipment. If you've seen any of those anywhere, they look like the equipment you see in a gym. Not the old parkour stations that were all over that nobody seems to know what to do with, but they have newer ones. They sort of develop an outdoor gym, and they've been pretty popular in a lot of communities. Go to the next one. And a few more here. Spray ground at Lefino Park, the dog park at Virgilio. Restore natural areas throughout the park system wherever you can, especially in those floodplain areas that you can't do much with. Look at a location for a possible recreation center with some gym space. Add the stage and roof at the amphitheater. Schedule more special events and cultural offerings to bring the community together. Expand your marketing and promotion of your programs. Capital maintenance and replacement program so the equipment can keep being replaced, and just plan for the replacement of playgrounds after 15 years, for example. Revive the Beaver Creek Parks Foundation, because that could be a great resource if it's done correctly, to help fund some of these park improvements, and to help to organize volunteers as well. And then look at opportunities for additional partnerships with other local organizations that can further your mission. So those are the highlights. Any questions that you have, anything we can help you with?
Anyone?
Very impressed by it, Your Honor. Well, good input from the citizenry and some really challenging recommendations.
Yeah, this is some great feedback that you gathered. I remember that 2008 study. I was on the park board at the time, and thoroughly remember going through that process and preparing everything, so I appreciate the effort, not only you, but the entire advisory committee put into this, and, you know, our park board as well. A lot of really neat things here, and I wish we had a magic wand to fund a lot of them, and that's going to be the challenge. We have a plan now, and now we need to decide how we're going to fund it, you know, if we are. First step is planning, second step's funding, so we've got the first step done. So thanks again for your efforts on everything.
Welcome.
Anyone else? And I'll just add to what Mr. Upton said, and that is the prioritizing those as well. I mean, you've done some of that, it looks like, already?
Right. The steering committee helped us with an exercise to establish priorities, and it's in the action plan section of the report, the priorities, all the capital improvements, but there's a whole lot of other improvements that are not capital improvements, just operations and management type, and they're also prioritized in here in the action plan.
Yeah. Thank you very much. All right. No questions? Do I have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 19-41. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure working with you and the steering committee as well.
Thanks to all of you.
Thank you.
We do appreciate it. Next item is resolution 19-42.
This is a resolution authorizing submission of an application for the Arbor Day Foundation Tree Recovery Program.
Thank you. And you're on again, are you?
Good evening again. Hello.
Branching out.
Oh, geez. No, 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 no. I think I went through all the jokes when we talked about the tree advisory board. I think I've heard them all now. So the Arbor Day Foundation has this program, it's the Tree Recovery Program. It was started back when Hurricane Katrina hit. They saw that, you know, like, hey, with all the devastation in the areas, that one of the things that they're lacking is the replanning of trees. So now that we are a tree city, USA, we have the opportunity to ask for funds. The way this Tree Recovery Program works is we submit a plan, say, hey, here's what we would like to do, here's how much money we would like to have, and then the Arbor Day Foundation goes to work. There is not a pot of money sitting out there right now. It's just, hey, we would like to do this. We submitted a plan, it's like the first year, we'd like $20,000, $10,000, we would purchase trees to distribute to all the residents, a variety of species, and then we'd use $10,000 to put trees back into our parks. So the Arbor Day Foundation would go out and solicit and say, hey, listen, here's some different funds, here's some different ideas that the city of Beaver Creek is looking for. Would you like to contribute? They would start that campaign. So if they come up with $20,000, they come up with $5,000, they'll come back to us and say, hey, we have this amount of money, here's what they said they would like you to do, are you interested in still doing this? And then when we say yes, we actually have to follow through. So I think we put together a good three-year plan of what we believe that we can do. It's something that will help our community, but it's nothing that would like, yeah, sure, you know, I'd like $100,000, but would not be able to complete that plan. So this is just kind of an ask, saying, hey, are we okay to go ahead and move forward? Asking the Arbor Day Foundation to start this. And it's not a matching grant, so whatever money they give is just what we get.
Fantastic.
Free money.
Super. Sounds great. Congratulations to the department and the Tree Board...
Yes.
...for their valuable input to this, and I think it's going to be a great asset, helping people to improve the landscape, even though I know the focus is on the structure. Still, that landscape's important, and we can help out there. I think it's great.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
With the governor declaring a state of emergency after the tornado, does that help us get any additional funds on top of this, do you think? Or just kind of help sell our story a little bit?
I think it would help sell our story a little bit. I'm not sure the ins and outs on that end of it. I can certainly ask that question, but I think it just helps...
I didn't know if there's any additional funding out there, because, you know, this has its roots in Hurricane Katrina, right? Which is obviously a natural disaster. Didn't know if because we experienced a natural disaster, you know, that impacted our trees and especially that neighborhood, if there's anything additional there?
Yep, I think it certainly helps any of those stories out there. Certainly helps the Arbor Day Foundation get us funds and helps us get those funds.
Hopefully, you know, we are awarded the grant, and I know you have a plan for it. Has the committee decided or looked into the types of trees that are suitable for Beaver Creek or that we would recommend?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Is it...
There's three types of trees they have listed.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, we do. It's on one of the attachments. So as we give out to the residents, we're going to offer three different species and three different sizes. It was another attachment under the Tree Recovery, gave the date, more of a narrative.
Got it.
Did you find it?
Cool. Very good.
And then we would do the same thing within the parks. It'd be a bigger variety within our parks.
Yeah, and they were specific to describe that they'd be better trees for storm issues that come up.
Yes, so a little bit more storm resistant and native to our area in Ohio.
That's all.
Anyone else?
I just think this is an excellent project, so thanks for the good work that you always do, the entire team.
I say thank you as well, so do I have a motion?
Motion to approve resolution 19-42.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 19-42. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. D and E have been removed from the agenda, so we'll move on to council time. And Councilmember Littrell, would you like to start?
Just a reminder that we have lots of information on our website about the final debris pickup, so I think that's important to note. Facebook's been a great opportunity. Pete's doing a fantastic job on keeping everyone involved in there. And then one thing that I was just made aware of recently is that people should check their credit report, because if you did not receive damage, apparently, there's a mortgage company that may have, whether it was... I'm not sure exactly how, but you need to check your credit reports, because some homes were listed that they had damage under natural disaster and it impacted a credit rating. So you should check your credit report to make sure that you've actually had damage, and then call your mortgage lender if you haven't had damage and there is something on your report. So I did some follow-up on that, and that actually is the case, so... So just a little warning out there, double-check. It's good to watch your credit anyway, so, people that are out there, so just keep that in mind. That's it.
Councilmember Rushing?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't want to speak on your behalf, but I do want to congratulate our city manager, Pete Landrum. At your event a couple of weeks ago, the Alder State came forth and recognized our city manager for the wonderful work he has done for the Tino Recovery Effort. Just wanted to, you know, reiterate as a council member, your appreciation for not only you, but our entire staff, as well as all the other supporting agencies and community coming together to support this effort. I know perhaps the mayor will have more to say, but thank you for that invite, and congratulations to our city manager for that.
Councilmember Upton?
Nothing tonight, sir?
And you were going to extend the meeting.
Wouldn't want to, you know, extend it longer than needed.
Councilmember Curran?
I'd just echo Councilmember Rushing's comments concerning the manager. I thought that was an outstanding thing to have the secretary come down and to give him special recognition for him, and again, the staff, everybody that's worked so hard on the situation. Secondly, we need volunteers at the Senior Citizen Center for the garage sale, August 1st and 2nd. Not only things to sell, but bodies to help. So big shout-out here to the citizenry. If anybody can come down and help us there for 1st and 2nd of August, why, come on down.
All right. Vice Mayor Garcia?
Thank you. I have no report tonight.
This is going to be a short meeting. All right. In that case, it's my turn. Just I got this, I opened it up today. Michael's House is having a lip sync challenge. I don't know if y'all... did y'all get one of these? It's to raise money for Michael's House. It's a lip sync challenge. But anyway...
I challenge, counsel.
Go ahead. Chuck, I'd like to see this.
On top of that, music in the park. I've gone... I didn't go last night, but I've gone the ones before, and they have always been good. They draw a good crowd. I'd imagine it got rained out last night, I'm not sure, but it... But anyway, that one coming up again on Sunday, 60s and 70s type music, it's always fun. Yep. You know, things have been going smooth. The tornado effort, I mean, it went out to the Spicer Heights Ice Cream Social last... yesterday. Apparently, they've been doing this for years. Yesterday was National Ice Cream Day or something like that. And on the way over, we were driving over, we, as my wife and I, and the clouds are dark. And I'm... in my... back of my mind, I'm watching the horizon, but I'm also thinking about those people that are having this ice cream social, the same ones that went through the tornado. I mean, there was a lot of damage down in that park, in that neighborhood. So I do want to pass on their thank yous. There was not a huge crowd because of the weather. People are still a little apprehensive, I think, but there was a good crowd. And every one of them expressed their appreciation for the work the city has done, and not to mention all the volunteers, but, you know, just in specific, the work that we've done with all of our wonderful staff, so I just wanted to pass that on. And I'm not going to add to the city manager's hat size about his award, so... So I will move this along and ask for the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. It was very humble, you know, I'm a humble person, so I was very shocked by that, and I, like I said, like many of you have said, the great staff here and great leadership with council is what... we're all a team, so I appreciate that. I just wanted to share a couple of things before I get started on the report, just as I think Councilmember Littrell had said, there's much information on our website and about the tornado-impacted area. We did mail out over 2,100 hard-copied letters, trying to get, actually in conjunction and partnership with tornado, Beaver Creek Tornado Network, that has... was willing to organize more volunteers. As we set out a last put-out date of July 28th, Sunday, July 28th, if you have your If you have your tree and brushed debris put out to the curb, on or before July 28th, that's a guaranteed pickup for it, that we'll pick that up. After that, that Monday, the July 29th, we start specific routes with the contractor. We'll start doing the routes, and when they do the route, if, you know, they do the route the one day, they're not repeating it, so if you put it out the very following day, you know, they will not be back. So, that's why we have the please, July 28th, last put-out date for tree and brush debris. Also with that, like I said, the hard copies of the 2,100 letters we sent out to the impacted areas, really gave the contacted information for the Beaver Creek Tornado Network, gave Aisha Osteen's email address and phone number, that she volunteered to say, let me have it. And I give her very much credit for stepping up. She wants to help volunteer, you know, organize volunteers, so if somebody needed her assistance or needed some assistance, she would organize it for them to not miss the deadline. So, she's really trying to step up for the city, and I appreciate everything her and those who have worked on the Facebook page, Beaver Creek Tornado Network, has done a fantastic job. So, the information's out there on Facebook, our Facebook page and our webpage as far as that, but July 28th is the key put-out date. Don't make that as a last pick-up date, because they're two different things. The news was, of course, I had to call one of the news stations, because they were saying last pick-up date, and that's different than a last put-out date. So, I think, just wanted to make sure I clarified that. Getting on with the...
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, yeah, please.
What, is there any benefit? I know at times we've told people to call in and give an address.
Oh, yes.
Is there any benefit for them, residents, to call in with an address?
If they're, like, right now, they can still do that. They can call the 427-5540, 427-5540, that's the public services phone number, and you can call that 24/7. Not everybody's going to be there, but it'll have a recording, and you can leave if you have debris that's been there, say, for a week or longer. It's not going to matter here in another week or so, but if you still have it there, you can let us know, and we'll guide them to your road or street, that there's, you know, been debris there for quite some time. So, yeah, or if you have any other questions regarding the debris, you can definitely feel free to ask that. But, yeah, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
That's one of the things we put in our press release. Green County and Green Town, or Green County, the engineer's office and the Beaver Creek Township both also have contact numbers listed for the same kind of thing. It's in the press release that is on our webpage and Facebook, so please refer to those numbers if you happen to be a Beaver Creek Township resident, or some of the roads that the engineer is, county engineer is dealing with are township roads where the county is responsible for the removal. So, just to give you a heads-up on that. Well, some construction updates. The resurfacing project is, annual resurfacing program is anticipated to begin this week. The saw cutting of the curbs and curb ramp replacements, that's going to begin. Then pavement crews will begin in early August on the actual paving, so it is coming up pretty quick. This is one of the areas that we do not believe we'll get to alternative streets, because we had to cut back for the funding due to having cash flow for the tornado relief of the efforts that we brushed debris and so pick up. But, you know, the, we did have a meeting with FEMA today, and there's a whole process that we have to go through for reimbursements and to get to 75%. We still don't know what the state's going to do, but there's a process there. So, at least the resurfacing of the streets that were listed on our website are listed there, so if you still haven't looked at that, to know whether or not your street's part of the repavement program, please look under Departments and under Engineering, and you'll see the repavement program, and you can look at the list of streets to see if your street is on this list. Also, good news, the North Fairfield, if you've been down the street, North Fairfield, it's nearly completed. The striping was completed over the weekend. I sat there and watched them do it in the 95, 96 degree weather, and I'm like, oh my goodness. It's like if the striping was going to melt. But, they got it done, so the only thing left remaining is the manhole adjustments that will be completed this week, of course, weather permitting. And it's been raining off and on today. I didn't expect the rain today as much as it did, but it's supposed to dry up this week, so, so, yeah. So, that's a, I said that at the mayor's event, manhole covers. My engineer, city engineer definitely knows, that's one of my pet peeves. You have a nice, smooth paved road, and you hit the manhole covers, and you go, "Kedunk, kedunk." And people, we, I hope everybody understands, throughout the years, you, as roads are, you know, the infrastructure put in, and throughout the years, roads get expanded, so people always say, yeah, it'd be great if the manhole covers were in the center of the road where the car goes and not in the wheel path, but as roads get expanded and stuff, it's just not financially feasible to move all the infrastructure. You're talking not only storm water, but you're talking county water, you're talking a lot of infrastructure under the road. So, it's just something we'll work on, getting those manhole cover adjustments that are good and smooth. Wanted to mention, this is the Night Out Against Crime, America's Night Out. This is kind of that national night out that we hear about, Tuesday, August 6th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and this is going to be hosted by Heartland of Beaver Creek, 1974 North Fairfield Road, designed to build strong community and partnerships that promote safe neighborhoods. This is a national, nationwide event, and it features food, information, resources, raffles, fun, and more. And there's some co-sponsors. You see, the Township Fire Department will be there, K99.1 FM, breakout games, Dayton Zombie Dog, Dayton Dragons, Hotheads Burritos, Alzheimer's Association, Heartland Hospice, Target, Chick-fil-A, and many more. So, please join us. Mark down on your calendar, Tuesday, August 6th, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., at Heartland on North Fairfield Road. That should be a lot of fun, and of course, our police department will be there. I'm sure our community engagement officer, is our motorcyclist going to be there, Chief?
Yeah.
Yeah, he'll be there. He's very popular with his Matt's Barber, Officer Barber, he's very popular with that motorcycle everywhere he goes.
People love him.
Yeah, yeah, they do. Unless they see him behind them, then they don't love him as much.
You would be surprised how many compliments he's had.
I, I, I saw something, and this is just to bring up sporadic something, but it's something I've never seen. I actually saw on Facebook, one of our Coffee with a Cop or something, somebody this weekend commented that they got pulled over for an OVI by armed officers, and they literally thanked them for it. And I meant to pass that on to you, Chief, because I thought that was, you know, I messed up, and I wanted to thank them for what they were doing. That's, that's, you don't see much of that, do you? But with what's been going on and wrong-way drivers and stuff where lives have been taken, I think that may have hit something with somebody, that that could have very easily been them, so maybe that, to wake somebody up, maybe something good can come from such tragedies that has happened here lately. And last, I just wanted to mention Summer Concert Series, as Mayor had said, July 28th, so we only have two more events, so this Sunday and the Sunday after that. Group called Southbound is classic rock with vocal harmonies and iconic guitar riffs, so, I don't know if it's 60s, probably 70s and 80s, probably more of a classic, kind of a classic rock.
That's a definite matter of judgment.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, what's referred to. I have no opinion.
Right, Charles.
But then August 4th as well, so, thanks to all the sponsors there who have hosted. I think that would be a great, now, we can talk about this at our retreat that we have, but, man, one of those, I agree, a cover for the stage would be great.
Every time I go, every time I go, I've said that's needed.
That's a very good idea.
Even when we've had the fish, I mean, we've had lots of things, plants out there, and that would be very helpful.
Yeah, that, yeah, that'd be a good idea, so I'm glad to see that coming. But come out to the Summer Concert Series, and there's always something going on in parks. One of the things they said about communication, which I agree, we always, we try everything we can, but the in-touch, if, don't be as quick to throw the in-touch away when you guys get that quarterly, because it has all our programming stuff in it and our contact information. So, I know a lot of people read through the other articles and then see all the programming and throw it away. That may be something worth filing in a drawer, and then when you think about parks and you think about concert series, it'll have a lot of that programming information and contact information in it, so maybe that's worth holding on to instead of, after you're reading it, throwing it away. But, appreciate everybody, and I do like to personally thank staff for all their hard work. We have much more hard work coming on us, coming up, but I appreciate all their dedication as well. And that's all I have tonight.
All right. Next item on the agenda is citizen comments, and this is a point in the agenda where anybody can talk to council about anything they desire. I see somebody from the SBA here that might have a comment or two that they want to present. Please come up. Name an address, though, please.
Okay, my name's Julie Garrett. My address is 2550 Hordes Street, Madison, Wisconsin, 53704.
Okay, thanks, Julie.
Yeah, good evening. I just wanted to give you guys an update on the approved loan totals for Green County, and just share a couple of things about applying for FEMA, SBA assistance as we're drawing closer to the deadline. So, these figures are from July 16th. We'll get some new ones this week, and I'll email them to you, but as of the 16th, Green County had seen 1.7 million approved, and there are still, there were 108 home loan applications put in, 31 have been approved so far, so there are still more in the pipeline. And there were 10 business loan applications to approve so far, but the total for that is $1,700,700, just so you know. And we're up to 12.8 million for the whole Ohio declaration, so that just keeps increasing every day right now. So, as you guys know, the Shaw Elementary School Disaster Recovery Center is closing tomorrow, and that doesn't mean the deadline's tomorrow. The deadline is August 19th, so we just want to make sure people don't confuse the closing of that center with the actual deadline. You can still apply online at disasterassistance.gov, and we still have a center open at the Beaver Creek Chamber of Commerce, and that's open weekdays, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and that's for SBA loans for renters, homeowners, churches, nonprofit organizations, and businesses of all sizes. And people have until August 19th to get in their applications, and they need to be completed by that date, not started, but actually have everything in and just, you know, everything ready and in by the 19th. So, do you have any questions for me, or is there anything I can help you with?
I just want to repeat something you've told us before, and that is, just because you apply, doesn't mean you have to take it if you get approved. So, I would, it would behoove anyone that's, was affected to go ahead and apply, and if they're approved, they have, what is it, 90 or 60 or 90 days?
60 days to even decide if they want to take the loan.
Correct, so you can still, if you, insurance covers everything, and you don't need it, you don't have to take it. So, it behooves everyone to go out and go through the application process. That's all I wanted to add.
What's the, what's the percent of approvals versus the total number of applications submitted?
I don't have that right now. I can get that for you and email it. It varies. I think the last time we looked, it was around 20%.
About 20%?
20% disapproved, 80% approved, when we looked.
20% disapproved, 80% approved?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, we had to do the math, so I just need current figures to do that math, but what the mayor said is really important, because I've heard people say they think that there's income limits to the assistance, but there's no upper income limit. These are really low-interest loans for homeowners and renters, as low as 1.938%. And then FEMA doesn't take income into consideration when they determine their benefits, so please try to encourage people to put this in. They don't have to take it, and if they change their mind and decide they don't want it right now, they have six months to reapply, even after that deadline. So, it's just a really good thing just to kind of get your foot in the door while that door is open.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for the update.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else this evening that would like to address council? Seeing none, we will move forward. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So do.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.